Good evening and thank you for joining us for the January 23 Board of Education Meeting. If everyone would join me for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start this evening with the report of the Superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for our January 24 Board of Education Meeting. As we just had a board meeting last week, I don't have much to report. Tonight, at long last, we welcome our high school principals Suzanne Kelly Short and several Rye High School students, and Ms. Kristin Warner, and our assistant principals, Dr. Meyer and Ms. Cannon. And they have come to speak to us as part of our series on the Rye Commitment, Living the Rye Commitment at Rye High School. They were originally supposed to come speak with the board last week, but given we had a snow day on Tuesday, we didn't think it was fair to ask them to come speak with us. So here they are, and the temperature is above freezing at long last. We are having a rain event, which I much prefer rain events like this rain event, not downpour rain events, but really glad that the group is able to join us. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, excellent. So let's start with our presentation and discussion number one, Living the Rye Commitment, the high school edition. Take it away.
Well, thank you, everyone. Good evening. You know it's serious when I bring notes, because I don't often do that. I want to thank you guys for taking the time. I know this is the third meeting where you're sitting, talking about living the right commitment for the different levels, and I appreciate that you're willing to take this kind of time to invest in hearing about what the learning really looks like in the schools. So the last four years for me has been an amazing experience in relation to this document, because when I first met Eric and we first talked about this document, it was just that, it was a document. And it was really more of an image that we used, and over the last four years, I've been able to watch it go from an image to an icon. And so it really is something that's serving as a foundation in our work. I remember sitting and talking to Chris Repetto about the idea of pillars, right, and how you anchor yourself and how you have your foundational thinking. And that is what this has been for me. When I do my mailings each week, this is there for me. These are my pillars. These are my ideas, and this is what I go back to at all times. And it's helped us to really focus on making sure that students are always at the center, no matter what, in the decisions that we make. And so it ultimately ends up looking like this. You end up with students in the center with curriculum development and professional learning as your anchors, where they really do work together in everything that they're doing. And the one thing that we've realized over time is that school and community culture are what allow all those things to take place and happen, and so they're really an integral part of the work that we're doing, for sure. Our work has been focused on not only how we are teaching, but what we are teaching, and how those two ideas go together, often realizing that sometimes the "how" is more important. So when you're looking at critical thinking, you're looking at those things. The way that you're teaching it is more important than the content that you're teaching. We have been focused a lot on pushing that thinking, which is what we're going to talk about and show you tonight, to solidify learning. And in order to access that learning, we've been doing a lot of work on creating an environment where students and faculty feel safe taking risks and being themselves in a way that pushes their individual experiences. So from the start, we have been cultivating a space of inclusivity and safety for leading the work as a founding principle, as one of those ideas of a pillar. And as is the case with the commitment, we've been dedicated to ensuring that all of the stakeholders on that commitment are a part of the process. What better way to know where to focus and what to move than talking to students? So we have had our student groups as the primary stakeholders in the decision-making in terms of recommendations, not necessarily the direction you go in the work that you do, but identifying the places in both the practices and the climate where we need some work. So our student groups have really taken a lead there, and we've been spinning that work into a lot of the things that we're doing. We started with one essential question for them that sounds basic, but it's not. How does what students see every day impact what they believe and how they learn? So we've been using that as a founding question in a variety of groups, including Excellence Team, Challenge Success in a variety of formats, and Student Council. Those have been our three primary stakeholder student groups that have been leading the work. And while the question might sound a little bit surface, it's kind of springboarded into some pretty deep conversations and a number of changes. To give you a sense of some of those changes, we have been able to have students identify the need for space for collaboration. And so in some of the walks with Eric, when we talk about, you know, these lockers, the students say it's a waste of space, can we just rip them out? The answer's yes. And so the kids have noticed that as a place of lost space, where you can collaborate, because they don't have the space for the kinds of collaboration that they're looking to do. And to remove some of the storage from classrooms, which students are starting to identify as a critical space for learning. Those are huge things. When students start to see that and propose solutions, that's a big deal. And so we've been very lucky that the Parents' Organization has been working with us to raise funds for that, so that we can actually start to make that a reality. It's a big reality that most people wouldn't be able to do, but we're very fortunate here. They also identified mixed messaging, they called it, in the hallways, in terms of what we have on our walls and display, and the ideas that we're speaking about in the Rye Commitment. And so they've been using the Rye Commitment to lead that work, but we spent time looking and putting up student artwork that exhibit critical thinking, to show some of the feedback work happening in art, in English, in all these different classes, based on the students saying what was on the walls didn't meet what they were looking for. And right there is a preview of a poster, there's a little grammatical structure, parallel structure change happening on it, but that poster is going to be hanging in the main hallway. It was designed by a club of students, along with input from other students, to say, who are we really, and how do we display that on our walls? So the Change Club just finished designing that. And then the students from Challenge Success have been working on a number of things that are really pushing the work with the faculty. They did some data diving into some of our Challenge Success data to find out what is it really that's pushing students to think and ask questions in the classroom, what's making them feel connected to adults. And we've been able to take back that data from the students, and in our January faculty meeting, the teachers took all the feedback from students, culled together commonalities, and came up with proposals for Tier One interventions that we could agree to across the board in all the classes. Some of it's basic, like greeting students at the door every day to make a connection, but some of it's bigger, with people throwing out ideas like advisory. And so these are conversations being led by students and teachers and not by us, which makes it far more likely to promote the work. But what's most exciting is that they see it. They see where those places are for growth and development. And then in Excellence Team, they've been trying to help with right-fit culture. So if you've looked at the course catalog, the idea of how do you find the right fit of courses, how do you find the right fit of profession, how do you find the right fit of college, all those types of questions are the things that they've been looking to figure out. How, starting in ninth grade, do you build that? And so if you've looked at the course catalog over the last three years, it's an entirely different document than it used to be, and that's because of students, not because of me. They have added the graphics, or they've suggested it, so the departments have done that. They've added links to student testimonials, they've added links to examples of student work, they have some suggestions of things we can keep doing to create that, and that's all coming from them. So they know what they need, and they're pushing that work. So we've had some time the last couple of years to settle into the Ambassador Program, the Garnett's Program, and the schedule change, so that work is solidly beneath us at this point, which is great. And it's given us a chance to kind of start to look at and move through some more of that work through programs and the different practices happening. In anticipation, both of the state changes that are likely to come, as I'm sure you've heard from Eric, but also to support the best interests of the students, we've built out a lot of different options to enhance learning for all different types of students. We have added to our dual enrollment program, and if you don't know what that is, it's where students can get college credit while taking Rye High School classes. We added an option for contemporary math, which connects to Westchester Community College. We now have two Syracuse University classes, forensics and science research, and we have three St. John's University dual enrollment courses in world language and math. And that's a really good credential, because it's real-world, higher-level thinking, but also using the availability that we have here. We also rolled out a journalism option for the first time for students who are interested in writing, and they're doing a whole host of types of experiences, from podcasts to articles. And we also rolled out the Art Pathway option this year for students, to support students who have an interest in visual arts currently, but we're hoping to build it out in music as well. There's a lot of other fun stuff. So when we look at the idea of an IB candidate school, which we are now considered, that really aligns with the work that we're doing in here. It speaks to critical thinking, global citizenship, and really looking at how you can push students to explore their interests and their learning on their own. And so that's something that we are excited that we're going to be rolling out for 11th and 12th graders in 2025, but that work is well underway. And while we're doing all of these things, we have been working on making sure that through the math programs, through the writing labs, through math labs, that we have supports in place to make these courses available to all students. We also are fortunate that doing all this work, and if you look at the community service model, it kind of fits in with this, we're not just looking at the programs that we're offering, but all the structures that we have in place in the buildings to support that work. So when you think NHS, that's a high number of students who participate in that, or the community service model, that's all of our students. We're looking for those high-stakes experiences, including discipline practices, attendance policies, where we can touch the highest number of students to learn what we really value. Those experiences are becoming integrative, focused on citizenship, community, being together, whereas before, some of those things were more individualized experiences, we're really focusing on being a community and being a group now. The one thing I have to say about all the practices on the right-hand side, none of those could be done without the people in this room or the people in our buildings. For the disciplinary policies and the attendance policies, we've been very fortunate that a lot of that work's been done with the board, with the intention of restorative practices, making sure that with any sort of discipline comes a comprehensive understanding of the importance of the right commitment, those ideals, decision-making, being part of a community, and making sure that students are learning from those things. We repeatedly put those messages out there, just like Eric does in his communications, we're very focused on those pillars, so to speak, and making sure that we're constantly going back to them to stay focused on the messaging and are consistent and clear, and the feedback along the way from families has really helped with that work. We try to model what it means to be part of a community, part of a club, give students experiences, and make sure that the structures we have in place support the ability to do all those things. So we reorganized our Parents' Organization, whereas before it was only a few people with kind of like some key roles, now we actually have the things that we need to support faculty initiatives, to support student initiatives, to make sure that we have a liaison to the Raze Committees, and making sure that everybody really is at the table, whereas we didn't have that previously. So for this part, you get the abbreviated version, because to a large extent, through and I'm fortunate to have been here for the elementary school and middle school presentations, you've heard a lot of those things, which is actually an unbelievable thing, to have sat in the last two meetings and seen similar strategies, similar conversations, and some of the almost same work happening. Tricia and I talked about the vertical surface work. To see that happening across the district and see that alignment, see those commonalities, I've been here a long time, those are not things that I've seen before. And so to see that shift happening in front of us is super exciting. And so I won't speak too in-depth about what we're doing for professional learning, because Joe did a really good job of covering that. We're doing the same 6-12 model, we're hitting the ideas of feedback and critique, questioning and discussion, bias and perspective, and the reflection and cognition. So we're doing those same topics that they've been doing. So far, we have had two combined meetings together, and the other meetings, we've been focusing on the Tier One work at the high school. And coming up, we have two more of those combined meetings, along with one for closure and reflection later toward the end of the year, some intervisitations, and then goal-setting based on the work that we've accomplished this year. So you've seen a lot of that stuff, so we're not going to dig too deep into that. But that leads us to the best part. The thing that really makes this work so exciting is what's happening in the classrooms and these amazing human beings sitting next to me. It's really in the everyday work that we're seeing that you see the impact of the right commitment and the things happening. I walk the building every day, I make sure I put it on my calendar, but one day I was walking and I stopped in Dan Freeman, who's one of our social studies teachers, I stopped into his class with the intention, you were definitely in that class.
Yeah.
Yeah. With the intention of doing what I usually do, which is stay for five minutes and exit, like when I see something, I pop in, I leave the teacher a note, and I stayed, it was, I think, the whole class. Like, I didn't leave, because they were fighting in a really good way, and I have clips of it that we'll probably skip, but it was a really productive conversation. I found myself unable to leave the room, so I texted my assistant and was like, I'm going to be late, I'm going to watch the rest of the class. And so I stayed and took pictures. And following that, I asked if Dan Freeman and Kristin Warner, who both teach this unit in AP US Government, would be willing to share the experience, because while there are millions of experiences, thank goodness, that we could highlight, I fell on that one right when I was preparing for this and couldn't pull myself away, and I am hoping that you guys feel the same. Don't forget.
Hello. Hi, I'm Kristin Warner. I am the Social Studies Department Coordinator at the high school and a longtime social studies teacher here at Rye High School. I'm here to talk tonight about our Rock the House simulation, which is a 15-day simulation that we do in our AP United States Government and Politics classes. This is a project that occurs during our unit when we're studying Congress, and it's completed in four phases, so I'm going to, the students are going to talk about the actual sort of like work that gets done in the classroom in a few minutes. But I wanted to just talk a little bit about how I see this project really fulfilling the right commitment in a lot of different ways. Because this is an AP course, it's a very dense content course, and the students need to master a lot of sophisticated concepts in terms of how a bill becomes a law, they need, they're exposed to a lot of new vocabulary. And the nice thing about this project is that they sort of live the experience of a member of Congress, and so through that experience, they learn all of that terminology and the processes that take place in Congress without really thinking about the fact that they're learning it. Sometimes at the end of the unit, actually when we review for the exam on Congress, kids will be like, wait a second, did we, did we learn this stuff? And then we start to say, well, yeah, don't you remember when you were in committee and there was a discharge petition? And they're like, oh, yeah. So it's like, they almost learn it without realizing they're learning, which is pretty cool. Another thing is that there's a lot of focus on research and writing skills, and they'll talk a little bit about how they need to write a bill that will then be marked up and critiqued by their fellow members of Congress. And what I really love about that is that they're writing for a different audience than they're often writing for. Instead of writing for an audience of one teacher, they're writing for their peers. And they know that this document is going to be something that's poured over and, you know, really critiqued by their classmates and potentially another class as well, and so there's a real sort of investment in wanting to do a good job and doing a very thorough preparation as they prepare their bills. They also have the opportunity to really be exposed to different viewpoints, and sometimes kids are, end up playing a role that really contradicts their own personal views, and so they have to think about things from a different perspective. But it's in a very structured environment, and so it affords them the opportunity to see things from different perspectives without it sort of blowing up and, you know, getting out of control in any way. And the last thing is that because this increases their political knowledge and their understanding of how the federal government creates and passes legislation, that studies show that political increases in political knowledge correlate with an increase in political efficacy, which then leads people to take political action. And so, you know, the right commitment is really about preparing students to graduate from the Rye City Schools as socially responsible, caring citizens who are prepared to make a contribution in a global environment. And this project really helps prepare them for that, you know, role. And I'm always saying to them, you know, you're generating, you know, you guys are now going to be taking over and need to fix a lot of the problems that my generation has created. And so, you know, I feel reassured that they are getting the skills and knowledge that they need and the motivation to take on the challenges that they're going to need to take on. So I'd like to introduce Samantha Kimlani, or actually, as she should be maybe referred to Speaker Kimlani, because she was one of our Speakers of the House during the simulation, and she's going to discuss the first phase of the Rock the House simulation.
Hi, I'm Sam Kimlani. This is actually like my favorite part of the Rock the House process, because it really forced me to step out of my comfort zone. So the first phase is billmaking and also getting your story for who you're supposed to play in the simulation. So for me, I was randomly assigned to be a Republican from Arizona, and my policy interest was homeland security, which was pretty difficult, because I think I've had my own viewpoint on that topic, and I really had to do a lot of research, looking from the other side and seeing an argument for something that I didn't really research beforehand. And I think just taking this class in general has really forced me to look for other news sources, like look for different types of information that I don't normally look at. And I think like, in today's global climate, there's just so many echo chambers of information, and people really get stuck in one way of thinking. I think in this class specifically, and especially in Rock the House, I've gotten to really expand my viewpoints on things. And also for the billmaking process, I really learned how to go through legal documents and how to access government websites, which I've never done before, and writing it actually kind of convinced me a little bit, and it made me a lot more passionate when I was discussing it with my classmates. And even though my bill didn't make it all the way to the end, the way I wrote it, I hope kind of gained support from my students and really tried to connect with them in their own lives and be relatable. So in the end, I felt like it was pretty successful. But I want to thank Ms. Warner and Mr. Freeman for really like exposing us to all these different like political viewpoints and allowing us to really explore them ourselves. Thank you.
And now I think Ty, Ty Bebus is going to talk about the next phase.
Hello, I'm Ty Bebus, and I represented the Speaker of the House for my class as well. And in the second phase of the simulation, students were offered the opportunity to run for leadership positions in the House. And these elections involved candidates delivering brief speeches to the class, and the positions included the Speaker of the House, the Minority Leader, and minority and majority party whips, just as there are in the actual House of Representatives. And the whole process really required candidates to communicate effectively with their constituency, or in this case, the rest of the class, and delineate the ways in which they would approach the position's responsibilities. And I really enjoyed addressing the class with my campaign for Speaker of the House. Following the elections, students met in assigned policy committees for two days to review and mark up the bills assigned to them, as Ms. Warner mentioned before. And if a committee votes to pass a bill, it's subsequently directed to the Rules Committee for final review and scheduling. And this process incorporated close collaboration amongst peers, as we had to decide which bills supported the goals and motives of our committee, and, you know, along with that, the, our individual views as representatives. And so the process not only exposed students to the general flow of legislation, which can be very complex, especially in the US Government and the House of Representatives, but it also caused them to consider multiple perspectives in the decision-making process. As the Speaker of the House for my class, I administered then, after the committee session, the Rules Committee Conference. And in addition to the leadership experience that it provided me as Speaker, the committee session forced us as a group to critically think about which bills outrank the others, essentially, and were succinct enough for a full-blown House debate. And that process really required consensus and open-mindedness, which I believe are really valuable qualities for students and individuals. So I, to summarize, I mean, I thoroughly enjoyed the second phase of the simulation, not only because it provided me with an extensive understanding of the flow of legislation in the US Government and in the House of Representatives, but it also let me interact with peers in a collaborative environment. So, very much enjoyed.
That's awesome. Ty, how many, how many votes did it take to get you elected?
Just a simple majority.
Just one?
I won by, I won by one vote, actually.
I gotta send you to Washington.
It was a close, it was a close campaign.
We need you there.
I think we should have Washington come here and sit with the classes.
Can you just say, you can explain the House of Representatives, because if you could do that for me, that'd be great, because I'm having a hard time the last couple of years.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Fellows Speaker of the House, Patty Harrigan here.
I gotta ask, how many votes did it take?
I actually, I ran uncontested, so it was much more of a dictatorship.
Wow. Oh, you're way more in line. I gotta stop now. Forget it. I'll stop.
Before Mr. Repetto gets himself in trouble.
I'm starting to, I was going to say, I'm starting to feel like a regular around here a little bit.
There you go.
In the, in the third and penultimate phase of our simulation, bills hit the House floor. And so when the bills were introduced to the House floor for debate, it opened the door for students to not only practice public speaking, but also challenge all of us to play as representatives who might disagree with ideologically. And then after everyone understood their parties and committee's values, the Speaker of the House Minority Leader would lead the debates, and we all the opportunity to replicate what actually happens on the House floor, which, you know, learning about legislative terminology and preparation for debates and understanding the public nature of our comments, we would receive mail from our angry constituents as well. I can attest that simulating the House floor was an experience that no textbook could have given me. And on behalf of my peers, we definitely had a lot of fun persuading, negotiating, and ultimately compromising to get a bill passed on to the Senate. And then, in the final phase of the simulation, we turned the classroom into the Senate and debated, amended, and voted on the bills made by our peers in the other classes, all in the hopes of eventually getting them signed into law by the great President Freeman and Warner. I loved how unstructured the Senate was. We had to take initiative to talk out our partisan differences, change bills, and ultimately get them to the President's desk. We could add these appendages called riders to bills, which would totally change their effect, which created whole new avenues to get our agendas passed through the policymaking process. And I could almost hear you guys shudder when I said policymaking process. I also liked the dynamic shift between Republicans and Democrats that happened during our Senate debates. Because Republicans outnumber Democrats, because Republicans are outnumbered by Democrats in the Senate, the opposite of how it was in the House, we had to be on the receiving end of all the tricks we played on them earlier. And so, yeah, and in debate, I would get cut off a lot. That being said, the 15-second conversations I'd have with my Majority Leader, a Democrat, we figured out how we would ever get our parties to come to terms were some of the highlights of the simulation for me. And as I look back, I see that our Senate was defined by the compromises we made ultimately through working together, and that, to me, embodies the right commitment. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm going to show you those clips that I kind of skipped over. They don't play well, but you'll get the general idea. So in this one, the thing that's interesting is that you'll see there's a student on the screen. They do these simulations across their classes, so they have to share the proposals and the bills through the recordings that they make, and it's shown in all the classes. So even though it's a simulation happening in one classroom at a time, they are working across the different sections. So you can't really hear, but hopefully you can hear the second one. In this one, they're watching the video of a student proposing a bill from a different class.
So that happens when the Senate, once, once bills make it through the House, they are sent to a different class that plays the Senate for those bills. So in order, because the second class isn't very familiar with the bills, they didn't go through committee there and everything, we have the author of the bill record a short explanation of their bill, so that the receiving Senate can now kind of understand why it was proposed.
And then this one, I cut a little bit short, because they're getting a little heated in it.
Just because your bill is better?
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear it, but she said, no, 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 I swear, I swear to God, my bill is better. So it's like, it's entertaining. So I'll leave you guys for questions.
No questions for them? Are you good?
Good. That's awesome.
Thank you, Kristin. So as I said before, I am fortunate beyond measure to work in a place with students like this, and I do get to walk the halls every day. And so this is something I stumble across, not quite like this, but on a regular basis. And I really wanted to show you something from each department, and I couldn't quite figure out how, and so when I was talking to Tricia, I said, what if I just do a video of a little glimpse of each department? And so that's what I did, because I didn't know how else to bring 900 students in here. I didn't think that would, that would be ideal. So instead, I'm going to leave you with some clips, and I apologize if it skips, there's a longer version that I will send to you that has some other things in it, but it skips into the classroom portion.
We're able to collaborate with one another through analyzing each other's spreads on Walsworth and just kind of like through a bigger picture through the entire school.
our work, and it's easier when we like collaborate, because we're able to like mark up each other's work with our own work and create things. And also sort of like work through problems together. And the bigger space provides for like more vision, so instead of having to paper or one big work out of your space, it's have work.
actually learning rather than just taking notes and tests.
So in my class, we like to work together on the board and use the board to like show our work, and it's easier when we like collaborate, because we're able to like mark up each other's work with our own work and create things. And also sort of like work through problems together. And the bigger space provides for like more vision, so instead of having to paper or one big work out of your space, it's have work.
actually learning rather than just taking notes and tests.
So in French class, we're working on a lot of stories and responses to the stories, and that's really helping me learn a lot more because, well, for one, it works better, but also it's pushing my critical thinking by challenging me to deeper into the story to respond to it.
Help. Helps. Speak. My talk helps me speak.
The coolest thing for me is that all those things were recorded in a week. I gave myself a week's worth of walking, my half-hour time a day to record what I could to capture it, and the questions I put up there, what I asked students and what their answers were. Sam just said that she loves seeing her friends up there, but the truth is that they're the ones doing the work. And they're so ready to talk to you about what their learning experiences are, that's something I think we should be really proud of. So, thank you.
Fabulous.
I pressed the button and it started playing again. No, I'm sorry. I think the students, you're right, Mr. Short, that, right, the students are the ones who are doing the work, but they have the support of teachers and administrators who see this work as valuable and meaningful. So it doesn't happen in a vacuum. So the students are lucky to have teachers and administration who support this type of learning, and then the kids are fantastic in that this is how they want to learn. I mean, I look at what you guys did on that screen and talked about, I probably would have enjoyed high school academically way more than I did. I loved it socially, academically, you know, it was fine. But because you're learning in a way where you're connecting, and I think for me, one of the comments that one of you made was that you were creating connections with your classmates while doing academic work. And how often do we hear concerns related to things like social and emotional learning that it can't be done in a rigorous environment, but yet in your AP Civics and Government class, you're creating connections with your peers in a way where you're learning, which is so meaningful on so many different levels. And it's just, it's an amazing thing to be able to witness and experience, and I think we are all lucky and better off for everyone getting to have these experiences. I don't know what others want to pipe in.
Yeah, it's so much to say, so much to talk about. I'm gonna do what I do all the time. I say, 12 years ago when I started this, the thing I heard from people when I talked about what did the RISE School District need to do, what did it need to become, the number one answer, the glaring answer was, it needed to stop being five different independent schools, and it needed to be unified. I cannot imagine seeing this, this, and this 10 years ago, 12 years ago. It did not exist. The amount of progress, amazing work, and where it's paying off for students. You guys are amazing. Thank you for being here. It's incredible to hear the level of engagement. The conversation Suzanne and I had, this is going back years and years, in my very simple-minded way, I always go back to first principles, and I think what I said is I need three, education requires three things, and that's it. I need teachers, I need curriculum, and I need engaged students. That's it. When you have engaged students, all of this starts to work, and it builds on itself. And then the teachers become more engaged, and they become more engaged in the curriculum, and the curriculum gets better and better, and you can see all these things play out. And we have an amazing support staff building the support for that and adding that to it. So it's just remarkable. I had no idea what I would see on this journey, and it just keeps getting better. So thank you.
I just wanted to say, well, just like after watching the video, I feel like for me and for Ty and Patty as well, like going into high school, like during COVID, was definitely like a unique experience and not something that we ever could have predicted or expected. But I think it was kind of a blessing in disguise because it forced like everyone in the administration and also us to like reevaluate how we like learn at RISE and how we like see our friends and interact with each other. And I've been really lucky to see how my experience at RISE changed so much throughout high school. Now I'm a senior, and I just like love every single class that I'm in, and I feel like I really enjoy and like look forward to being able to collaborate with my friends in my classes. And in middle school, for example, I think it was a very different experience than it is now, where I feel like there's so much more emphasis on like being a rigorous environment, but also being fun and being like exciting and current, and like not just stuff that you might like learn in a textbook, but also like real life, hands-on learning. And so like watching that video just made me like kind of happy because like, just like seeing my friends on it and also just like seeing things that I see every day, like I'm glad that it's being recognized by everyone and like thank you, I guess, because you guys all really made it happen, but I don't know.
No, you made it happen. You made it happen.
We are the last people who make it happen. We are the last ones who make it happen. And as I said, it's your teachers, it's the administration, and it's the willingness of students to engage in this kind of work, right? Because if, and it was funny, when I was looking at the video, one thing I wrote down was classroom setup. There was an old way of teaching where the teacher stood in the front, and there were rows and desks, and you would be lectured at the whole time, very similar to this kind of setup, which is not great, but that's for another day. But that's how school was, and that's not what you guys are experiencing. But if you weren't engaging in learning, your teachers would absolutely go back to the other way of teaching because it's a lot easier for them. But this way is so much more meaningful and productive for everybody, and it's amazing.
Yeah, I just, I don't have much more to add except for thank you guys for coming and describing this whole experience. As you started talking about a bill becoming a law, the, you know, "I'm just a bill" started going in my head. Clearly, you guys learned it in a way deeper way than I did on Saturday morning, sitting in front of my television. And I think the other piece of what everyone has kind of said, and I think, Sam, you said it when you talked about pushing outside your comfort zone, this is, what you're doing is you're taking really great risks that are allowing you to push yourselves and challenge yourselves, and you're in an environment where the teachers and the administrators are saying, yes, this is where we want you to take these risks, because this is how you grow. You're challenging yourself to say, you know what, I'm not gonna sit here, especially in an AP class. I think that's also a phenomenal example, to use an AP class for this, because you aren't, you are having to learn a lot of material in the time that you have the class, but you're learning it in a way that is gonna stay with you. And so if I was gonna say, going back in my eight years, I don't have 12, I only have eight, what I would, I remember having conversations about that, like how do we, how do we change what we're doing so that kids are learning and it stays with them? I mean, "I'm just a bill" stayed with me because it was adorable and it was catchy, and, but this is gonna stay with you, you know what I'm talking about.
I've got the VHS and the DVD for you to watch.
But it's gonna stay with you because you experienced it in a way that it now has a functional part of how you think and how you engage with the world. So thank you all for coming and talking about this, and thank you to the teachers and the administrators for fostering this and continuing to foster this. It's just, it's fantastic.
Thanks.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Well, that was exciting. So, you know, let's see what other exciting stuff we've got. The Capitol Project update.
We are very excited to be here tonight to give an update on where we are on all the Capitol projects. I know that we last came to the board in June, there was a lot of discussion at that night, and so Gabby and Rob and representatives of our professional team are here this evening to share an update at this moment in time. So take it away, Gabby.
Thank you. Thank you to Barbara Lawrence Ryan, our professionals who have been with us through thick and thin, gearing up for our next round of construction.
And will be with us at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning for our weekly meeting.
That is true. I can't say it better than what our folks who just left, but I can speak from the operations team. Every day, we think about, work toward, make sure that we are providing the facilities, infrastructure, health and safety to live up to the right commitment. Just reminding everyone where we've come from, all of the different construction phases as we continue to work toward the finish line. We are spending tonight to talk about what we are calling Phase 3 and 3A, giving an update on where we stand. As Eric talked about, we were last here with the group in June, talking about the finances. We had talked about being at a point from a financial standpoint where we had $30 million of the $80 million still available for projects to get us to completion. And if you remember, we prioritized what was on our to-do list, priority 1, 2, 3, and 4. And this is how it is flushing out and what we expect to be able to accomplish within the next two phases, again, Phase 3 and 3A. We'll talk about Phase 3 first, which basically we've been working toward, and we are actively working as we speak on Phase 3, which will include at the high school, middle school, the interior renovation for code compliance. So I just want to reiterate, and I actually put it at the bottom here, any space that we go into, we are incorporating code compliance, health and safety, and ventilation upgrades. So it gets repeated over and over again, as you see on the slide, but rest assured, all of those items in any space that we touch are being checked off as we go along. The media center renovation in this building is going to take place. We actually are going to take big steps toward that, we plan to, in February, where we are going to use the opportunity of the February break to ready a space that will ultimately become the High School Innovation Lab, to receive the library on mobile carts from April to the end of the school year, making the media center available for our professionals to go in and start the work in earnest, to get that space to where we want it to be come September, when we return for the next school year. As I mentioned, the height, I'm just gonna skip around for one second, because the space that we're going to ready to receive the library is where the High School Innovation Lab will ultimately be, which is across the hall from the existing media center. So again, that space, we will go in, we'll vacate that space for student use in February. We will use from February to April to get it ready for the media center, and then that too will be under construction through next September, where we will deliver both the new High School Innovation Lab and the media center for September to be used by our students. In addition, we will be going into the Performing Arts Center for what I'm calling Part 1, which will include ceiling, lighting, painting, and some leveling, if you will. Rob, right?
Sure, I'm happy to add a little detail. I spent a lot of time with our design professionals, walking roofs and in tunnels, and the Performing Arts Center is a massive undertaking, and we're dividing it in two phases, so we, starting from the top down, and what we noticed is there's a lot of variation in the steps, so what appears to be a fully functional staircase does require some adjustment, certainly since we're revisiting it, and we have to bring that into code compliance. So the variation between steps from some 1970s renovation is something that we have to revisit. And the, I am thankful, we've been working with administrators, it's quite a team effort, so the faculty and administrators are, in their ultimate flexibility, are helping us look at this plan so we have a goal of completion, and their flexibility is allowing us to come early. So this movement that Gabby was describing is really, is critical and instrumental to letting us start that next year with a, you know, completed project. So we don't want to, we learned a lot of lessons from the previous renovations, so we don't want to begin in anything that we can't complete in its entirety. So even if it's in phases, at least the phase could be began and completed. So we are masters of supply chain pitfalls, so. So even if it's in phases, at least the phase could be began and completed. So we are masters of supply chain pitfalls, so.
So that will.
Can we just sort of share the overview of, so Phase 1, so, Part 1 of the Performing Arts Center?
Yes.
Includes?
So it will include ceiling work from painting to new lighting, painting, new lighting down the walls, including all new curtains and shades on the windows and the stage.
Right, because I know some people would like us to keep those window shades, but we're going to replace them.
Yes, we are.
I'm being facetious.
Yes, because they're falling over.
That was a great look, Chris. I should have taken a photo. It's Chris.
Because I was going to bring it up if you didn't, so.
Oh, did you like them?
No. Matinees, there was a gap where the sun just comes streaming through every matinee. It's amazing that it's still there.
The dry rotted curtains will be gone.
Yeah, they just fall. So curtains, lighting, painting.
Leveling of the steps.
Yes.
And then Phase 2, or Part 2.
So Part 2, which will be the next summer, right? Because we can't afford to, even for a minute, take the Performing Arts Center offline. So we are being very careful about making sure what we put on our to-do list can truly be done within the eight weeks of summer so that we are fully operational on both ends. So Phase 2 will be predominantly the removal and replacement of all the chairs. It's a lot of work. And maybe you can help me in terms of how, what that really means.
Sure, so it's after the floor.
I get to pick them, but he has to actually make them.
But if they'd like to demo the new seating, the new seats in Gabby's office, so you can stop by and you can try it out. You haven't tried it out yet? I mean, maybe.
No one told me they were there. I'll be there tomorrow.
So it's not simply the removal of the chair. After it's removed, we have to prepare the concrete. There's going to be flooring, epoxy coatings, continuing the leveling below the chairs to make sure that they're equidistant. We are changing the two stairs going down. They're slightly adjusted to make it a little more comfortable. So that's going to all be incorporated. And one of the, one of the biggest drivers for separating the phasing is, A, you have only eight weeks to do it, but the tasks required don't allow any overlap. So the painting might require full scaffolding of the theater and some equipment. So we're working on that now. But there's, there's no amount of labor that could overcome the fact that one is on top of each other. So we, that's, after looking at multiple different scenarios, this is what we think will be a very efficient division of tasks here.
So then, as we look at what we're calling Phase 3A, again, it focuses on the high school, middle school, the completion of the Performing Arts Center, and diving into the Arts Design and Engineering Center, which we have pretty much identified the classrooms that that will incorporate, which then will bleed into the art rooms in the high school. So we then decided that that would all be encompassed in one project, if you will. And that's how we decided to tackle that area. So those two items have been slated to begin this time next year, or a little sooner, with completion going into September of 2025. In addition, we continue to work toward the Midland and Osborne portable classroom replacements. We feel very comfortable at this time that we believe that we will be replacing them with modular construction, meaning that they are not portable classrooms that will replace the old portable classrooms, but it will be construction that is done off-site and then driven down I-95 to then be placed and attached to the existing buildings. And no one will know the wiser. These are permanent structures, I just want to repeat that, permanent structures, not like what we are currently living with or dealing with. This was something that we hoped we would be able to get to sooner than what the expected timeframe is there. However, because SED is involved, there are some things that need to change in terms of the existing approvals that we had. Number 1, the existing approvals were for conventional construction. So because we are changing the mode of construction, it does require us to go back to SED and re-identify how construction will be done. In addition, our existing approval has expired. Because if you all remember, we were embarking on that, I want to say, gosh, in '21, I believe, is when we were going to do it. And at that time, we had full SED approval, but that has since expired because we did not act on that approval.
Right, we have, and this is quite extraordinary, we discovered the one thing that was not allowed to have a COVID extension. Everything else in the world had COVID extensions, but not SED approvals. I have spoken with the commissioner about this. I've spoken with legislators about this. This is the one thing they did not give an extension to. Our COVID tests that we have, still have cases of, they keep extending them.
Those tests are good forever. As far as Jake's concerned.
Can we trade them back for some approvals? We trade them back for approvals?
I wish. But what I would say is that, because I don't want our communities of Midland and Osborne to think, oh, we're pushing this out way far. Our anticipation with the commercial build, with the spec build, or whatever we want to call that, no, before it was modular, the conventional build, was that sometime in the mid to late spring of '25, that we would have the classrooms online. This, what this shift is, including the SED process, we anticipate fully online classrooms occupied for September of '25. So it pushes us a couple of months. But that's putting a lot of pressure on the folks in the front row here because it requires finaling, finalizing the designs and getting those submissions up to State Ed. None of the other projects, because of the work that's happening, require us to go to State Ed for approvals, which is why we're very confident in the timing and the dates and everything there. This is the one project that's moving it. We will have to go to the state with art design and engineering and art classrooms because there's a lot of redesign of those areas. But because the shift in this, this is the one for this coming batch of work that will require State approval.
So I just want to shift a minute.
Wait, can I just ask one question? So just so I'm clear then, from a timing standpoint? Because the timing for the art design and engineering is, seems to be the same as the timing for the additions to Midland and Osborne.
Once we get done with, we get everything submitted up to Albany on the designs for the new wings, we'll be shifting into the design phase for the other, the art design and engineering, so that we could then move forward with that. Again, looking at next spring, starting to bring those on in the summer work after that. So there's some overlap. That will clarify itself as we go through the design process, but that's next in the queue.
I just want to shift to financials. We've looked at this slide once before. I'm happy to report that we have made some adjustments. So remember, we were here in June of '23. We had provided estimates with respect to the projects that we spoke about. Our estimates have been refined relating to, as we've refined the scope of work, as well as had the opportunity to really take a sharpened pencil. So as you can see, some of the budgets have fluctuated a little bit and changed. But I am happy to report that we are remaining within our funds that are left over. So we feel good about being able to move forward with the projects that we've discussed tonight. Having said that, as we continue to work through our projects, we have anticipated future phases. This is work that remains to be done, that we need to look at. And we will continue to, as we progress through developing the new additions at Midland and Osborne and the art design and engineering, see where we land to be able to take another look at the anticipated future phase work that remains outstanding.
Can you just remind me, on the future phase, it was the Midland site systems? What is that exactly? I know it's not here, but it was on, it's on the phasing schedule as a future phase.
I think that was the drainage work and the fire code work related to the new wing.
Is the question specific for 324?
No, just on this slide, yeah. So it says Midland Site Systems. I was just curious what that, what was being postponed to a future phase.
I think Eric is right. I think, did that have to do with what we had to do to the outside in terms of?
It was the fire access, yeah.
For when it was a conventional build, is that what you mean?
I don't know. I have to, you know what? I will go back and look at that.
Okay.
I'm not 100% sure. But I, my gut reaction to that is it was what we needed to do on the outside because it was a more complicated build with the positioning of where the new addition was going to go compared to where it is now and what the requirements around that was going to be.
Right, and there was the relocation of the playground. And particularly, and it was very specific. We spent a lot of time focused on the fire access, the fire code access, because there, there isn't a hydrant. It was the turnaround of the trucks and the things that you've been working on with the fire.
One of the benefits of the new design is not requiring the road to wrap around the new building, but the curb cut and being able to pull up to the front of it with a door there satisfied the fire department.
Right, the conventional build was further back. And we were going to have to cut a full access road behind the building as part of that work. So I'm pretty certain that that's it.
So this is more like a dash? Like this fell off, if we moved to modular, then it would not be a future phase?
And we can confirm that and then make that change on the slide.
Okay. Did have another question, just on, back on the project estimate slide. If you guys could just talk through, I know a lot of the estimates for where some of the, the project outside of the contract costs have moved around from the, from the 2019 kind of estimate. So, you know, incidentals are at 4%, I think they had been at 20% for the original budget that came through. So just thinking through how you thought about the change in those numbers for this budget.
Sure, so I think what you're referring to is when we did an update, we were using stale numbers, right? Because it had been budgeted numbers originally from 2019 that we then had to build escalation costs around COVID response costs around. So we were coming out with figures that were upwards of 20%.
I think just the general, you know, like when you develop a budget, trade costs and you add in, right? It was kind of the build-out of the original budget. Not where we landed, but the original build-out. Those estimates were different.
But I think they, they, they were more in line with these estimates from our original presentation. But there was an in-between presentation where those numbers went haywire. And that was because we had 2019 estimates that were essentially stale-dated when we were talking about this in 2021 and early 2022. So those percentages, you're right. They were, they were upwards of 15, 16, 20%. However, these are now, these escalations and percentages that we're presenting here are based on new estimates that were done in 2023, 2024. And Empire Core assisted with this. And looking at what is currently happening in the construction world, we feel very comfortable that we can reduce these percentages and escalations back down to what is a more reasonable, where we used to live, construction world.
Because these are, these are identical to what we saw in June.
But she's right, prior to.
Right, but before that, right. But this hasn't changed from what you updated us to for in June.
After Phase 1 and speculation in going into Phase 2 and what we saw in terms of what was coming in and bidding and whatnot, we did adjust those percentages because numbers were, again, we were using budgets pre-COVID and we were trying to capture what we had learned after Phase 1 and Phase 1A to try to anticipate where we were going with Phase 2.
Okay. And then, is there, for the classroom additions, which will be started next year, there's not a price escalation assumption on those projects right now? And is that sort of built into the $5 million?
Correct.
Already?
Correct.
So it's just, it's built into that one and then we added it in for the art center? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, thoughts? It's like the little engine that could, right? I think I can, I think I can. We're getting there, we're getting there slowly but surely. We're getting there, costs are, everything seems to be maybe helping and getting us there. And it's exciting that in spite of all of the chaos over the last, I've lost count, how many years, six?
A lot.
A lot of years. Well, I guess eight, seven, yeah, seven years. But we're still, we're almost there. And there's good work. And when you get to come into the buildings and you see the work that has been done, it has been transformational. And so it's exciting to see it continue and that the progress and the projects continue. And so we are so appreciative of everyone's work and effort because it is that train, it's going to get to the top, and we appreciate it. So thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm always in awe when I look at this, the phasing schedule, and you see how much has been completed. And I think it's easy to sort of forget that because it's now just in place. And for some people, it feels like it's always been there. But it hasn't. And so I think that's the other piece that is always amazing to me.
Chris can attest that fresh air was not always coming into Midland.
That's very true.
Not to a lot of places.
It's a huge amount of work. Good, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you all so much, thank you so much, greatly appreciated.
Thanks for coming out.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we will now move on. For the hearing of the public on non-agenda items, we welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff members or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel, as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may always submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@rysschools.org. by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. Seeing no one here for the time for the public to be heard, we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Chris Tripetto, seconded by Sean Clockford. Let's take a look at the consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Pupil Personnel Services. Seeing no questions, can I have a vote to approve this evening's consent agenda? All those in favor? That would be 5-0 with two absences. Okay. So on tonight's, give me one minute, my apologies for my lack of preparation. One day, one day I'll get it right. Okay. I will, just keep saying it. Okay. On this evening's consent agenda, we have approved the district calendar for 23, 24, 25. So all of you parents out there who like to make your plans well in advance, please know that it's on tonight's consent agenda. And there's some changes, there's some, so please make sure everyone takes a look and marks your calendars accordingly.
And we will be, as we always do, we will be sending an email tomorrow morning out to the community with the calendar itself.
Okay. Excellent. In addition to that, we have the acceptance of three retirements this evening. Our first retirement is Mrs. Deana Gelman. It is with sadness that I announce the retirement of longtime Osborne School kindergarten teacher, Deana Gelman. Mrs. Gelman is retiring at the end of the school year after 26 years of teaching in the Rye City School District and 32 years of teaching overall. She joined the Rye City School District in January of 1998 as a long-term substitute teacher at Osborne School. She joined the Osborne, Osborne School faculty the next year. Before coming to Rye, Mrs. Gelman was a substitute teacher for a variety of school districts in Long Island and then a first grade and kindergarten teacher at PS 83 in Manhattan. Over the years, Mrs. Gelman taught summer school, was the GLIT facilitator, participated in the math subcommittee, spent five years as the grade kindergarten level leader, was a member of the report card task force, was on the elementary math curriculum and program committee, and the elementary math committee, was a longtime advisor to the student council, was a teacher mentor, participated in the phonics unit of studied literacy workshop, was a member of the CSE committee. She was the RTA representative for Osborne for 18 years from 2005 to 2023. Mrs. Gelman has a bachelor of science degree in elementary education from Syracuse University and a master of science degree in elementary education from Hunter College. Osborne School principal Angela Garcia said of her, "I have enjoyed working along Mrs. Gelman for the past 12 years. She has been a valuable thinking partner around teaching and learning in the primary classroom and helped shape the future of many Osborne students." In a poem she wrote to celebrate her retirement, Mrs. Gelman said, "32 years, so many moments, so many faces. There isn't anything that could ever replace it. But the time has come to say goodbye to this incredible part of my life in Rye. To the fabulous children and supportive families, thank you for sharing this wonderful journey with me. Mrs. Gelman, we wish you all the best in your retirement." We have also accepted the retirement for Mr. Andrew Rayner. It is with sadness that I announce the retirement of longtime Rye City School District music teacher, Andrew Rayner. Mr. Rayner is retiring at the end of the school after 28 years teaching music in the Rye City School District. He first came to the Rye City School District in January of 1996 as a leave replacement music teacher at Midland and Osborne Schools. He joined the district as a full-time music teacher in 2002, splitting time between Osborne and Midland Schools. In 2017, he became the full-time music teacher at Midland School. And in 2019, he again became a split teacher, splitting his time between Midland and Milton. Over the years, Mr. Rayner was responsible for many holiday concerts, plays, and assemblies, often writing original music and lyrics for plays and concerts. In addition, for many years, he served as the fifth grade yearbook advisor and as the AV coordinator for Midland. In 2013, he served on a committee to revise the elementary music curricula at first through fifth grade levels. Before coming to the Rye City School District, Mr. Rayner taught music at Quaker Ridge Elementary School, the Heathcote School, and Scarsdale Middle School, all in Scarsdale. He also served as a leave replacement at Fox Meadow Elementary School. Mr. Rayner is a professional double bass player. For many years, he taught at the Summer Challenge Gifted and Talented Program in New Rochelle. Mr. Rayner has a master of arts in education, music, and music education from Teachers College at Columbia University, and a bachelor of arts in English literature from Denison University. Middle School principal, Mr. Jim Boylen said of him, "Mr. Rayner's passion for music education is deeply rooted in fostering a love of music in his students. He has dedicated his career to nurturing a positive and inclusive learning environment where every student can explore their music potential. Through engaging lessons, constructive rehearsals, and wonderful performances, he has instilled a lifelong appreciation for music in his students. Mr. Rayner will be sorely missed by his colleagues and students. We wish him all the best in his next chapter of life." In his retirement letter, Mr. Rayner said, "I have thoroughly enjoyed my work in the music department of the Rye City, Rye City School District. I retire with gratitude for all of the students and teachers that I've worked with over the years. And, Mr. Rayner, we express our gratitude for all the work you have done with the Rye City Schools, and we wish you all the best in your retirement." And we have another retirement. We have the retirement of Mr. Marshall Tapo. It is with sadness that I announce the retirement of long-term Rye City School District music teacher, Mr. Marshall Tapo. Mr. Tapo was retiring at the end of the school year after 28 years teaching music in the Rye City School District. He came to the Rye City School District in January of, shoot, yep, sorry, in January of 1996 as a long-term leave replacement music teacher at Midland School. He joined the Osborne School faculty as a music teacher the next year. In 2017, he began work splitting time between Osborne and Milton Schools, and in 2018, he moved to Milton School full-time. Over the years, Mr. Tapo was a teacher mentor, served on a committee to revise the grade six music curriculum and the elementary band music and chorus curricula. He served as director, co-director, music director, and co-music director for the Rye Middle School Fall and Spring Musicals, and helped with set construction, lighting, choreography, and musical accompaniment. At Osborne, he was in charge of the annual musical and for many years, the advisor to the yearbook club. At Milton, he was the advisor to the spirit club and the talent show. He was the source of innumerable creative and enjoyable snow day and delay song recordings for which the superintendent and the entire district are very grateful. Prior to working at Midland and Osborne, Mr. Tapo was a vocal and instrumental music teacher at Purchase Elementary School and a general vocal music teacher at the Rye City Schools. He also worked, yeah, no, yep, he also worked as a vocal and instrumental music teacher in Hastings-on-Hudson, Rhineck, and Portchester School Districts. Mr. Tapo has a bachelor of science degree in music education from Westchester University and a master of fine arts in jazz performance from Purchase College. Mr. Tapo is a professional bass player, composer, recording artist, and producer of pop, rock, jazz, and children's records, and has performed in national and international theater tours for Cats and Jesus Christ Superstar. He is a longtime volunteer at the Capitol Theater in Portchester. Milton School principal, Mrs. Annie Pykarziki, said of him, "There are truly no words to describe Marshall and the impact he has had on everyone here at Milton. From his daily teaching of music to his over-the-top, original Milton films, there is nothing he cannot do. Beyond imparting musical knowledge, he has been a mentor and source of inspiration, fostering a deep love for the art of music. As we express our deepest gratitude, we wish Marshall a retirement filled with the same joy he has shared with many of us, and may the next chapter be as harmonious as the melodies he has conducted at Milton School." Mr. Tapo said, "During my 30-year career in Rye, I've had the privilege of teaching at all three elementary schools and have enjoyed every year. My last years at Milton have been amazing with the supportive faculty and administration. Thank you." We wish you, Mr. Tapo, all the best in your retirement, and we hope you enjoy all of your time that you will get to spend with your very first grandchild, Riley. That's enough retirements for tonight. So we will now move on to presentation and discussion number two, where we don't have anything. So we will move on to information and discussion, where we have lots of policies to chat about. So, Mrs. Boyle.
Thank you. Not nearly as many as we had last time, but.
That is true.
So these are three different policies. The last meeting, we talked about what else we did in policy committee, so here it is. The first is nondiscrimination and equal opportunity. This is a, an update from the fall for us to make sure that we have included all of the protected classes within this policy. So you'll see that's where the majority of those changes are. And then as we've seen this trend coming down from, from NISBA for a while to be updating language, so things are more pronounced instead of saying shall, saying will, those kinds of updates are also a part of this policy. Questions? This sort of falls in place with the, all the sexual harassment policies that we also just reviewed and adopted tonight. So similar types of themes.
We've looked at this policy so many times over the years, I think it just basically says we're going to obey the law.
Yes.
And be.
Yep, but we got to say it.
Yeah.
Every time.
Every time. I know.
Every single time, yes.
There is a paragraph in here that I just can't make heads or tails of, which is the one right, right above the annual notification. It says, "Nothing in this policy will be construed to prohibit a denial of admission into or exclusion from a course of instruction or activity based on a person gender that would be permissible under the law." I think it just says, we're going to follow the law, or we can prohibit things if the law says so. I think that's what it says. And then there's a clause at the end that just says, "Or to prohibit as discrimination based on disability, actions that would be permissible under the law." I don't, I don't understand the clause as discrimination based on disability. I think it just says, whatever the policy says, things that are allowed under the law.
Trying to think of, I can put it into words that would make sense.
I think it just says, things that are, that will be permitted under the law are still permitted, I think, as far as I can make out of it.
That would, that would seem to be, so again, it's sort of like we're saying, as with some of these very prescribed policies that are following laws, you have what we were not going to do, but then we're going to say, but if it's allowable through the law, then we have to allow it.
I don't think in a policy, I think, I don't think in a policy, we can say that we will do things that are not, we won't do things that are permissible by law, or we need to leave the option open.
Exactly.
Well, we can, we can certainly say in policies that you're not going to do, that we won't do things followed by law, but the law will then say to us, "Your policy is irrelevant because you will follow the law."
Right. Which is the starting point.
And there we go back again.
Every time I bring this up, that's the starting point.
Yep.
You basically have to follow the law, which is good. You should follow the law.
As one should. That's why they're laws.
If you can figure out what it says.
If you can figure, this is a lawyer, employment protection.
Yes. Any other questions besides that?
Sorry. Sorry.
Okay. Moving on. The next policy is 4321.12, which is timeout and physical restraint. This is, for all intents and purposes, a brand-new policy because it now includes all students. And so NISBA, as part of the update that was required because of the state regulation changes, they require, they required specific things to be included in the policy. And so this follows those requirements. You'll see in the second paragraph, there's a highlighted in green set of words, so it's the need, the need for the. I left that in there for a highlight because the original version that you might have looked at earlier over the weekend did not, those words did not make it into the transcription from the NISBA policy into our format. So it changes, it makes more sense out of that paragraph. So I did get a question from Kelsey about this, because it's, again, a little bit picking up on what you just said, Chris. We're saying that we're going to not do any of these things, but in the instance that something might happen that we would need to do these things, here's what's going to happen.
Right, right.
So the, the goal is that we're going to, that we're going to use as many of the more positive proactive evidence-based, research-based strategies to address any situations with the goal of reducing the occurrence of things, with the goal of eliminating the need for the use of timeout and physical restraint, and with the goal of improving the school climate and safety of students. So that, I just wanted to explain why that was highlighted there. And the rest is fairly self-explanatory. And there's a more detailed regulation that accompanies this, because again, sort of another question that was raised about this was the term timeout, which I think, you know, from a parenting standpoint, you might have a different definition of timeout than what this document is referring to. So those are all detailed and defined within the regulation and not here in the policy. If there's a question about that. Any? No?
I can.
Then our last policy is an update, it's 4327, and it's an update to our homebound instruction policy, which also has had a slew of updates recently. So what this, what this policy is, has been updated to include is specific notation of students that are requesting home, hospital, or institutional instruction for the, homebound instruction for those reasons, put it that way. So if somebody is, has something that is a physical, mental, or emotional issue where they are not able to be in school, that has now been more specifically defined within this policy under this paragraph of students with disabilities. And in addition to that, there was a, an addition placed into the paragraph that talks about students instructed out of school due to suspension to ensure that that was separated from, from homebound instruction, but that they are allowed for the minimum number of hours of instruction available to them, but not, not in a homebound, I'm not going to say this well, so I'm going to look at Aaron, not from, not specifically homebound instruction, but it might be a instruction that would be allowed with a minimum number of hours per week. Yes? No? I'm saying it wrong.
Say the S.
Okay.
I don't know that I fully understand, so I don't want to.
No, no, no. So, so the, so I'm just trying to make sure I say this right.
It's way more important that you understand this than me. I just want to.
Yeah, way more important. The addition in here for out of school due to suspension does not qualify for quote-unquote "homebound instruction" in the same way that the rest of this policy addresses.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. The line that was included indicates that students must receive the minimum number of hours required, though, for homebound instruction, even if they are out for suspension.
Correct.
There we go.
And, and.
Third time's a charm.
They have to be offered it. So, you know, so there are times where circumstances doesn't prevent the whole amount of time, and so we work with the families.
Right, right. It's the, it's the opportunity and the offering of it that's required within the policy. Any other questions there? No? Okay. Those are our three policies for this week.
Thank you again for the work of the policy committee leading into this.
Yes.
Stuff.
Yes.
Yes, lots of stuff, always. That's why it's such an important committee.
Can't you tell by how my explanation went? It was a tongue twister.
Should have troubled you for the question.
It was a tongue twister.
All right, so next on to communications to and from the board. Policy committee met on the 10th, and it looks like the Curriculum Council is set to meet on January 31st. So those who are not members of the Curriculum Council don't need to attend, but those who are, but they're always welcome, but those who are on the Curriculum Council, we do hope that you will make yourselves available, and if not, Chris is certainly happy to be your second.
And Chris is always welcome at policy.
Yes, I mean, have at it.
Great committee.
Is there any, are there, rather, any other communications to and from the board? Okay, seeing none. I will remind everybody that our next meeting is on February the 6th, and that is the 2024-2025 budget presentation, so we hope to have lots of people eagerly awaiting the information. We look forward to a great presentation, as always, and with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Krista Pedo, seconded by Kelsey Johnson. All those in favor? 5-0, 2 absences. Thank you and have a good evening.